The February 12th Brooklyn City Council meeting to order. Mary Jo, will you call the roll, please?
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Absent excused.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes to approve from the January 8th meeting. Any comments or questions?
Motion approved. Second.
To approve the minutes, Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to the mayor for swearing in of our newest officer.
Thank you, Council President. Heather, if you could go up here.
Oh, my lord.
You're quite the crew.
Hello again.
Good to see you. That's just for the YouTube, so. Right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Heather Thomas.
I, Heather Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
And the charter and ordinance of the city of Brooklyn.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As patrol officer in the city of Brooklyn.
As a patrol officer of the city of Brooklyn.
According to the best of my understanding and abilities.
According to my best understanding and abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you can get a picture with that. What's that? Oh, yeah. Who's pinning? Mom, come on up. Congratulations. Yeah, mom, you can get in here, it's fine. Come on, Lieutenant. All right, very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming. I appreciate all of you, thank you so much. Glad to have you, Heather, welcome.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have our first public session. If anyone has anything to say pertaining to an item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, we will move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll start with the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening at 6:00 PM, and we addressed the following items on our agenda, which relate to finance. Resolution 2024-2, authorizing a community cost share agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. This is on second reading, and this is for $13,680. Ordinance 2024-5, which is on first reading, but we're hoping to pass under suspension of the rules. This is authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2024. This increases our capital improvement budget by $14,100, and this is to extend the use of the sewage container that we have out in front of the senior center. The project took a little bit longer than anticipated due to delay in getting some of the materials. So this will take us through March. Ordinance 2024-6, which is also on first reading, and it's requesting suspension of the rules, authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, which is NOPEC, 2024 Energize Community Grant. And this is a grant we've received for $25,637. We have not identified a specific project yet, but this will go to improving lighting somewhere in the city. And I'll roll right into the committee of the whole. And the committee of the whole did address the items I just covered at the Finance Committee. Additionally, we have ordinance 2023-40, which is on second reading, enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2024-1, which is up for third reading and adoption this evening, amending Section 121.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn by amending various rules of council. And this is, these are the changes and updates that we discussed and approved in our organizational meeting. The last agenda item is ordinance 2024-4, which is on first reading. This is an ordinance vacating Manila Avenue. Now we'll move on to Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn's YMCA Summer Day Camp, June 10th through July 5th, at the Senior Center, and July 8th through August 2nd at the Elementary School. Hours are 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM. Summer Day Camp provides an exciting setting for your children to explore. Weekly themes allow campers to learn through art, sporting nature, and character development activities. The cost is $200 per week. Please contact Site Director Amanda Nadel at A-N-A-T-A-L at clevelandymca.org, or call Payment Registers Office at 216-263-6860 for more information. Mini Canes Basketball for grades pre-K through 2 will be held at the Brooklyn Middle School Fieldhouse on Thursdays beginning March 7th for a six-week session. Instructor is Johnny Bowlen. This program will focus on developing basketball skills such as dribbling, shooting, and passing. Parent participation is requested for pre-K group. Pre-K to K, 5:30 to PM, 6:30 to PM. First and second, 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Fees, residents $50, non-residents $60. Registration is open through February 15th at www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn Youth Spring Soccer 2024. Ages 3 to 4, Fridays, 5:30 PM till 6:30 PM. Ages 5 to 6, Fridays, 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Ages 3 to 6, register online at www.jumpstartssports.com. Registration deadline, April 21st. SR/SL Soccer, ages 7 through 15, U9, U11, U13, U15, boys and girls. Ages 7 to 15, registration February 12th through March 8th. Resident fees $60, non-resident $70. Registration online at www.brooklynrec.com. Practices begin March 18th. Our Core Park Games begin April 13th. Tentatively, SR/SL REC Travel begins, will hold practices on weeknights in Brooklyn, and games will be played at both home and away sites on Saturdays. Independence, Middleburg Heights, Parma Heights, Macedonia, Valley View, Brooklyn Heights, Broadview Heights, Seven Hills. SR/SL teams will be split by gender if numbers permit. Volunteer coaches needed. Let us know at registration if you are able to coach. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 20th, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is the Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. A major impact of teen dating violence is that between the ages of 12 and 19, these youths experience the highest counts of rape and sexual assaults. Girls often face the worst long-term effects that cause long-term behavior and health consequences, including suicide attempts, drug use, and eating disorders. If you or someone you know is experiencing teen dating violence, there is help. Please connect them with the National Dating Abuse Helpline, a project of the National Domestic Violence Hotline by texting LOVEIS to 77054, or even through live chat at loveisrespect.org. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And next we have the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Community Room, located at 8800 Memphis Avenue, to hear the following. A variance request from Lisa De La Cruz for an additional 336 square foot for an accessory structure, which is a shed, at 10018 Manoa Avenue, permanent parcel number 432070275. A variance request from Lisa De La Cruz for a two-foot to the minimum rear yard setback of the five feet for an accessory structure shed at 10018 Manoa Avenue, permanent parcel number 43207025. Any other business that may become, come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. All individuals may attend the Zoning Board of Appeals and have the right to comment either in person or at the meeting or in writing to the Zoning Board of Appeals at 8800 Memphis Avenue, Brooklyn, Ohio 44144. I also have the report from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has scheduled a special meeting for Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, at 6:00 PM via electronic means. A request from Alberyn Rice for a preliminary site plan approval for a 19,928-square-foot building addition for Arrow at 9900 Clinton Road, permanent parcel numbers 43101004, The public is also encouraged to offer any comments or questions prior to the meeting by emailing those comments or questions to dford@brooklynohio.gov. The meeting will be available on the City of Brooklyn YouTube channel. To be heard live, please contact dford@brooklynohio.gov. Next is the School Board Liaison, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Council President. This past Tuesday, I attended the workshop in the Treasurer's Office with the school board. At this meeting, the superintendent discussed the five strategic pillars of academic success. Great discussions were had with the board and the superintendent regarding the success of our students both at home and in the classroom. The next school board meeting will be on February 27th at 6:00 PM in Room 173. Coming up on February 29th, the school is hosting a Career and Resource Fair starting at 5:00 PM. This will be open to students, families, and community members. There will be representatives from colleges and universities. You'll be able to learn about internships, job opportunities, and if you are a high school student or a family of a high school student, I highly recommend that you attend. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports of council, and this evening we begin with Councilman Grodick.
Thank you. Just a few things. Even though we've moved our primaries to March, it still catches me off guard. So I thought, just reminding everyone, we do have a primary election on March 19th. Voter registration is open until February 20th. So if you've recently moved into the community or have changed addresses, you would like to update your records, you have till February 20th to do that. And I'd also like to remind everyone, even though it is a primary election, you can choose to have an issues-only ballot. And we do have two important issues on the ballot this March. The first one, which you probably will be hearing quite a bit about between now and March 19th, is Issue 21. It is the school bond issue. If you haven't already, take a look at the school district's website. There's a lot of information, and I'm sure Dr. Kalaris and the school board will be having more information about the renovations they would like to make to, primarily to the high school, but also the athletic facilities. And the other one is a renewal. It's Issue 26. It's Health and Human Services. It is not new money, which you'll hear that phrase often, and it is important funding to keep our Health and Human Services moving in a forward direction. I would like to congratulate Patrol Officer Thomas. It was great to see so many people here to support her in her new career and in her life. That always really is interesting to me to see so many aspects of her professional life and her personal life, and all of those that we are swearing in. And the last thing, I try not to talk too much about my day job, but last week was a very fun week in our school district. It was our second annual Hurricane Heritage Week. The high school had done heritage and cultural awareness prior to the pandemic, and then after the pandemic, the entire district has joined in. It was just a wonderful week of celebrating where our students come from and where the adults that work with them also come from. It culminates with a Friday afternoon parade where students are encouraged to wear their traditional culture clothing. And it was so large this year that we had to organize it by continent. And it was just wonderful seeing so many students dress in their, in their traditional clothing and have such pride. I had a, we have a question of the day every day in my class, and during the week, one of the questions was, what are you most proud about yourself? And it was so interesting to hear their answers. I'm proud that I can speak Nepali. I'm proud that my family is from Greece. I'm proud that my family is from Nepal. I'm proud that my mom is from the Dominican. It just, it led into the entire week. So it was a great, great opportunity to see where we come from and where our students are coming from especially. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. My sincere condolences to the family and friends of Mr. Brad Swatfield on his recent passing. Condolences also go out to the family and friends of an older gentleman that resided here in Brooklyn. His wishes were to remain anonymous, no social media, no funeral home, no gathering. He was a great father figure and friend of many. He always left a memorable impression with you when you met him. You'll be missed, sir, and always remembered. Thank you to 40 individuals that came out last Tuesday, to the first speaker of this year for the series presented by the Laurel Garden Club, Friends of the Brooklyn Library, and Keep Brooklyn Beautiful. Next speaker is on Tuesday, April 2nd, at 7:15 at the library. It's for container vegetable gardening. Checking on the event this afternoon. The event is set for 75 people and is full, but you can get on a waitlist. As in this past week, when we had the event filled up, we had a number of no-shows. So if you want to take your chances, please do show up. Getting good reviews on this stuff. Thursday, May 16th, is gardening for pollinators. Thank you to Mr. Abruzzi this morning for showing me around the ice rink. He mentioned a couple weeks ago about the difference in lighting in the ice rink, and it does stand out. It's a big, big, big difference. It really looks nice. Kind of feeding off of what Mrs. Grodick said, I've got a thank you to her and her class over at Brooklyn Schools. Since 2015, we've been doing a Christmas card exchange with a school in Latvia. Just a few weeks ago, we moved it up a notch. We had a Zoom meeting with the students in both schools, even with the seven-hour difference, beginning of the day here, end of the day there. Interesting. Even with the difference in hours and miles apart, the students learned that they are a lot alike in how they dress, how they talk. It was just like a fun event, and we'll probably try to work on it some more. In this past week, I had a chance to communicate with Lieutenant Eschwalter about something that takes a few minutes upfront, but when in a time of an emergency, may things, may make things a little bit simpler. The lieutenant informed me that through Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles, an individual can fill out a next-of-kin or emergency contact document online. When officers are responding to a situation where they need to run a person's personal information through the BMV records, they would be able to access the next-of-kin or emergency information. Something to kind of be aware about. Sometimes you're somewhere out in a situation, a car accident. You could be self by, yourself at home, and there's nobody in contact. It's something to think about. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley?
Thank you. Good evening. At first, I would like to welcome Officer Thomas and wish her a long and healthy career here in Brooklyn. I would also like to recognize that we are in the month of February, which is Black History Month. I was doing some research on the origins, and I found some information that I'd like to share with you tonight. It originally started in 1926 by Carter Woodson, who was an historian. It was also originally recognized as Negro History Week. February was chosen because it was close to President Lincoln's birthday, who was responsible for the Emancipation Proclamation, and Frederick Douglass, who was a prominent abolitionist. Fifty years later, in 1976, Black History Month was formed with the urging of President Gerald Ford to participate in its observance. Also, on January 31st, I attended an informational session with Dr. Kalaris in the auditorium of the high school. A few residents, as well as some of my fellow council members that were there to ask questions regarding the current condition of the high school. We were able to see firsthand the renditions of what the bond money would be used for. I understand it's impossible to get everybody together on that specific date, but there are many more chances for residents to visit the facility and take a tour. The next informational session will be on Saturday, February 24th, at 9:00 AM. I also had the chance to look at Memorial Park, where we're doing some repairs to the baseball field. I see that the fence posts are installed. Some of the lighting posts are also installed, and I'm very excited to see the planning of that finally come together. Just a last reminder also, the Athletic Boosters are hosting their Night at the Races, February 24th. Tickets are sold out, and I think the horses are sold out also. If you would like to donate or help in any form, please reach out to Michelle or Megan with Athletic Boosters. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Barowski.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Heather Thomas as well on being sworn into our police department this evening. Welcome to Brooklyn. I'm wishing and praying for many safe years of service for yourself. This past week, I was able to stop up at Therapeutic Touch and acknowledge Sonia Foradora. Born and raised in Brooklyn, she's been in business at Therapeutic Touch for over 30 years. Following her parents, which were both business owners, her dad, a machine shop owner, and her mother's salon, Sonia ended up with her location on Memphis, which was located next to that salon. Since '92, 32 years, which is being celebrated in June, she's only shut down for two months, and that was during COVID. With clients that range from nurses to construction jobs to desk jobs, her staff of trained licensed massage therapists bring experience to serving their clients with a care and healing touch. Congratulations, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Tansky.
Good evening. Thank you. I would like to welcome Heather Thomas as our new police officer in the Brooklyn Police Department. And I'd like to give hats off to every one of our police officers. They have such a rough job out there. When I turn on the news every day, I cannot believe what I see in the news. These officers have to make such split-second decisions. Their jobs continuously everything, no matter what hour of the day. I'd really give hats off to every one of them. Amazing we're getting police officers hired because I know City of Cleveland's having a rough time. Every one of them, I can't, I can't say more about them. Protect our city and protect us. Can't thank you. One more, I'd like to go up to the mayor. What's up with me calling you all the time? Roads, especially these state roads. These 480 ramps are atrocious. I don't know why the state is waiting so long. I think they're supposed to be fixing shit.
Design is this year, construction will be next year.
We're gonna go through another year pounding our cars on state ramps. That is ridiculous with the amount of taxes that we pay. Not only are we going up to these pounding, but we have emergency vehicles coming up these ramps the same way. I can't imagine the patience in the back of those ambulance is getting these hotlines. Taking that entire vehicle. Because when I'm there, I see what's happening. Mayor Ron Dinkler, when I called you the next day, they were out there. I don't know who you know at the state. The next day, they were out there patching those holes. And it's falling apart again because the patcher using is not holding up. Plus, you could call. So I don't know if we can move that date from 2026 to 2025. I don't know if you could request that? Because those ramps are just, they're really, really tough. I don't think our residents should have to put up with banging up their car in the front end, something they're doing. Whatever you can do, if you can move it up, I would appreciate it. I don't know how their budget is running, if it's possible. But again, I do appreciate you responding as quick as you did, as far as getting this most fast. And who's not?
Thank you. The Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation had their annual meeting Monday, February 5th, 2024, at 5:30 PM via Zoom. We approved the minutes from our 2023 annual meeting. Next was election of trustees, and we did reelect John Witten to another term. We had election of officers for 2024. The mayor was elected chairperson. I was elected secretary, and John Witten was elected treasurer. We approved the 2023 financial statements. And we did learn that former mayor Katie Gallagher, who was a member as a citizen, did resign. So because we really have not had any activity and we're not anticipating anything soon, we decided that we would wait to appoint that vacancy. However, if we have some sort of business that requires a meeting, we all agreed that we would appoint that vacancy prior to entertaining any business. I have an announcement that the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council has been scheduled for Wednesday, February 22nd, at 6:00 PM, and they will be meeting via electronic means. At our February 26th council meeting, Superintendent Dr. Ted Kalaris will be here, and at the beginning of the meeting, he will be giving a presentation to us. And regarding Issue 21, I did also attend the information session at the schools. I think it was January 31st. And I also went to the first Saturday meeting, the walk and talk that they had. And I would encourage anybody who is interested, or if you have any questions. Basically, we walked the facility in the high school and actually saw firsthand some of the current conditions, which are really woefully outdated, especially when it comes to our science labs. And then we got the explanation of what the plans are if Issue 21 passes. And that completes my report. We'll move on to the report of the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank, I'm Adam Cottis of St. Thomas More for inviting city council, the police and fire chiefs, as well as myself, to attend a special mass on Friday, February 2nd, during National Catholic School Week. I appreciate the kind words and prayers from the staff and the students of the school. I also want to thank students Parker, No, and Elizabeth for visiting City Hall later in the day with snacks for all the City Hall employees. St. Thomas More has been a staple in the city of Brooklyn for a long time, and I'm grateful for their continued presence and support. Last Wednesday, February 7th, the city was able to host the First Suburbs Consortium's quarterly meeting. We were pleased to welcome 30-plus mayors and other city officials from cities surrounding Cleveland to discuss various topics that affect all of our Cleveland to discuss various topics that affect all of our cities, so it was good to have that group with us. This past Saturday morning, the city hosted Brenda Davis and the Urban League of Greater Cleveland for a homebuyers workshop. Representatives from Brookshire Hathaway and Fifth Third Bank joined Ms. Davis in hoarding this event. There were over two dozen people registered for the event, and valuable information was provided to prospective homebuyers. I'm grateful for Ms. Davis and the Urban League of Greater Cleveland for reaching out and for allowing Brooklyn to host this Saturday event. Also this past Saturday, my sons and I were able to attend a Baron Cup game. It was a Normandy versus Westlake at the Recreation Center. Kudos to our recreation team to do a fantastic job hosting this tournament every single year. It was a good game, a lot of fun, and had a great time with my boys there at that game. So kudos to Mr. Abruzzi and his team. We begun negotiations with the Service Garage Union, the final union in our city, Local 860. We had our first meeting on January 30th. Our next one is scheduled for this coming Wednesday. The permanent city center generator, city center generator is to be installed by the end of this week. This is the final piece, last piece that's been missing from the project. It's a temporary generator, it's been sitting behind the building since then, but it should be installed by the end of this week. The city will also be advertising for our local streets program, Williamson and Bearwald, on the week of February 22nd. And February 29th, the bid opening will be on March the 8th. The bid opening for two other projects took place this past Friday, one for the I-480 and Tiedemann Turn Lane Project. TC Construction was selected as the vendor for this project. We would expect this project to be completed by early fall. The bid opening also took place for the I-480 and Tiedemann Landscaping Projects, which is the other two quadrants on Tiedemann Road. The lowest investment was Everlast Landscape Group. They should have their work completed by the end of July, and that's per ODOT. As Mr. Mosley mentioned, the M1 field replacement is underway. The fence posts have been stalled, and the lighting project is about 50% completed. All the lighting timers for the lights at Marquardt Park will be programmed this week, and so those lights will be on a timer and should be functioning as they should. Mr. Henry is working with Mr. Abruzzi to formulate a request for the quote for professional design and administrative services for Veterans Memorial Park. I did have the privilege this past week of meeting with both Senator Dolan, who chairs the Senate Finance Committee, as well as our state representative, Delacuilla, to discuss this project. The city has applied for Ohio capital budget dollars to assist with the renovations. Both of these gentlemen were very receptive to our project, which does bode well for their city-receiving grant dollars to assist in paying for this project. Additionally, the city is also working on a grant application from the State of Ohio's One Time Strategic Community Investment Fund. We will be applying through Senator Dolan's office to receive funding for the Natatorium Renovation Project. The Ohio Senate portion of this fund is $350 million that is slated to be used for large one-time projects. The Natatorium renovations seem to fit this perfectly. The application is due April the 8th, so we hope to be able to receive some funding for the Natatorium project that is slated to begin work next year as well. Mr. Henry also is working on the completion of our proposal for the new city service garage salt dome. We will also be likely be adding lighting in that area. It was a request from our service workers up there once that dome is completed. Under personnel, we had seven applications for the full-time maintenance labor position in the Recreation Center. Mr. Abruzzi will be conducting interviews in the coming days. We hope to have a hire by the end of next week. And to answer Mr. Tansky's question regarding the Ridge Road ramps, yes, the local branch for ODOT is very receptive to the city, which I'm grateful for, and they will come out and make some more permanent repairs whenever the weather is not so cold. They have to use the cold patch now, obviously, which is not as effective as the hot patch. They will be out once the weather breaks for that. The construction design is underway for this year. It will take place next year. You may think I have connections at the State House. I don't have that good of connections to move up their timeline, so I don't. They're just, the ODOT's just very receptive, which we're grateful for. But those, they are bad. They understand that. They'll be replaced permanently, well, not permanently, but replaced totally next year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And the mayor reminded me about the mass that was celebrating the end of Catholic Schools Week, and I too would like to thank the St. Thomas More community for inviting us. Our fire chief also attended, along with the mayor's assistant, Ms. Ludwig. So it was very nice, and we got a very nice, warm welcome. And the mayor mentioned the history of St. Thomas More. I know when my grandparents moved here, there was no St. Thomas More. They belonged to Our Lady of Good Counsel in Old Brooklyn, and then when my grandparents were here, they were founding members of the parish. So the roots in our community go way back, and I appreciate the invitation. Okay, now we'll move on to notifications. Dear Mayor Van Kirk, thank you for submitting projects for our 2024 preventative maintenance program. The Department of Public Works has completed the review of all projects submitted. The infrastructure needs in Cuyahoga County are extensive, and budget constraints only allow the county to fund a limited number of projects each year. We wish to congratulate you on the following projects being selected for funding. Bid off-road from Tiedemann to Ridge Road for base repair for $20,000, and this is for materials cost. Memphis Avenue from Tiedemann to Ridge Road, pavement striping with multimodal and base repair for $80,000. The county will process 2024 material cost reimbursement payments for the above-maintenance projects once the proper documentation has been submitted, reviewed, and approved by the Department of Public Works. Reimbursement documentation is to be submitted no later than March 31st, 2025. Your total reimbursable costs for the year 2024 may not exceed $100,000. We plan to continue this program in the future, and you are encouraged to resubmit unsuccessful and/or additional projects for further consideration. If you have any questions about specific project or details of the program, feel free to call June Goss, Senior Project Manager, Public Works, and then gives her phone number and email. Sincerely, Chris Ronain, County Executive. Now we'll move on to legislation. On second reading this evening is Ordinance 2023-40, enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. On up for third reading and adoption, Ordinance 2024-1, amending Section 121.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn by amending various rules of council. We need a motion to adopt.
To adopt, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-2, which is on second reading, authorizing a community cost-sharing agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Under new business, we have Ordinance 2024-4, which is on first reading. This is an ordinance vacating Manila Avenue. This is basically the non-street that has a name over, off of Tiedemann. We first consolidated the parcels owned by the city. Now we're vacating Manila, basically saying we don't need this to be a street anymore, and this is all in preparation to hopefully sell that property that's owned by the city. Ordinance 2024-5, which is on first reading, and we're hoping to adopt under suspension of the rules, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2024, and this is the $14,100 additional that I mentioned for the sewage container in front of the senior center.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
To adopt, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-6 on first reading, hoping to pass under suspension of the rules, authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2024 Energized Community Grant, and this is for the $25,637.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we all have our second public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized, and please observe the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Bring this up again. I've had several friends ask me, talk with other people, not really happy about the almost unmarked police cars. They really like to be able to see the name, but that's those other people. And again, the eight-foot signs, or any way we can do away with the eight-foot signs? Give people a sign they have in a business, they can put a sign up, or if you're driving down the road and there's a car next to you, an SUV, you have a chance of seeing the sign eight-foot, you're driving by them all the times? And I get people telling me the same thing. Yeah, it's crazy. And back again for the 100th time, streetlights. As we go forward, is there any way we can put brighter streetlights that actually light up some of the yard and more of the street like the old streetlights? Cleveland has them, why can't we have them? And again, I hope I don't get an answer again. Can we also stop rewriting history and deleting history? It's ridiculous. They take down a Southern statue, Brown, was it Brown statue, Bron statue? I don't remember exactly which one. They weren't supposed to melt it down, and they melted it down. Makes total sense. History is gone. And it does this before. I don't understand the new math, but these young sellers and that, and grocery stores and that, it seems like they're clueless. And again, I've had people tell me their grandkids and that, get in trouble if they figured it out the old way. And nobody, if you talk to an older person, understands the new way. But again, two and two equals four. How you have to do it in the new way, beyond me.
Anyone else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn? Okay, any council members or the mayor have anything further? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Thank you.